Ladies and gentlemen, it's 9:00 AM. I'll call the meeting to order. We have not only a quorum but a full house. Thank you for being here on the first meeting of February. Would you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come before you. You are the Creator God, you who watches over us and cares for us. Thank you Father for implementing and putting in place civil leaders. Thank you for the men and women that have represented before us. Who lead and serve this community. We pray specifically for this meeting. We pray Father that you would give them wisdom. We pray that you would give them unity of mind. We pray that you would give them humility. We pray that you would give them clarity on what is best for Fredericksburg. Father, we thank you so much for your love for us in and through Jesus Christ. We thank you that you care about meetings like this. We thank you that you answer prayer. We thank you for this day, for the rain. We ask for your grace upon this time. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You see this? May I know who you are? I don't know that I've met you.
Yeah, we've met, but you see a lot of people. Cody Carnet, I served with Trinity Church. We were formerly Fredrick'sburg Christian Fellowship and just changed our name Route East on Schmitzinski right there.
Thanks Cody. Appreciate you being here today. I have number four ceremonial matters proclamation and employee recognitions. Mr. Bailey?
Okay, Mayor Council, I have a couple of new employee introductions and a what's like three employee recognitions. We had about twenty on the list today. We're going to bring a couple of large groups next time from our public works departments. I'd like to start off with our new employees. We have two new employees in our finance department. These were both positions that were added during the budget process this year. So if I could ask Laura to come up with your two new employees for introductions. I'm going to let Laura do the introductions. I don't think either one of these folks is very shy. So I'm going to ask them to tell just a little bit about themselves and then I have a couple of words to say as well. Laura?
First of all, I would like to thank Mayor and Council, manager for supporting our finance department. We have two new employees for this year and I would like to introduce Darren and Bridget to you. Darren Eckert has been with the city for approximately twelve years. He's worked in the street department. And he has been hired as our hot tax collection specialist. During his twelve years in the street department, he received several promotions and he's also gone back to school and received a bachelor's degree. And Bridget Plant, she comes here with over twenty years' experience in accounting and finance. Eight years at another city in the finance department. And ten years as Assistant Finance Director for the Hill Country Transit District.
I'm going to put Darren on the spot here since he's a longer term city employee. Darren's a real good example of our employee succession planning process. Again, he started in our street department. I can remember Darren doing some work at wastewater treatment plant across the street in some of my very early days here. And very motivated individual, went back and got his degree and now he has an office in City Hall just right up there with the rest of us. So Darren, if you could just share a few words with the council about how you got to where you are and why you're working for the city of Fredericksburg.
Good morning. How are y'all today? So working for the city last twelve years, just been a great experience. A lot of great people that I've worked with over the years. I've had several mentors over the years that, you know, working at the street department and, you know, work ethic is a big thing, you know, strong work ethic and I plan on continuing that in my new role. And I appreciate the opportunities that the city has given me. So thank you.
Darren's a big, big part of our no potholes in Fredericksburg. So he's right in the middle of all that. Bridget?
Hello, I'm from the city of Plano. I worked there for eight and a half years. I did a lot of things to start off as the bookkeeper doing AP payroll, accounts receivable, utility department. When I left, I was the interim finance director. Previous to that, I was in San Saba for ten years at Hill Country Transit as Assistant Finance Director. This opportunity came up and I kept emailing them and saying I'd really like to move to the city of Fredericksburg. And I was lucky enough to get the opportunity and here I am.
Okay, on to employee recognitions. Thank you. So we have three police department employees that we're going to recognize today. We recognize a lot of members of our police department at just about every council meeting. One of these is really something. Been looking forward to recognizing both Sergeant Hurl and Officer Smithy. If I could have you both come up? So this email comes from David Young with Fire PMS. Derek Seelig reports that he was contacted by David Young. Who wanted to pass along that these police officers among others have responded to the shooting just outside of town several weeks ago. David Young advised that the officers put the shooting victim in the backseat of a patrol unit. There were PMS responding, as you can imagine, a lot of commotion going on. Pressure was applied to her wound. It was a shot, I believe in the head. So it was a very critical situation. These individuals actually took this person to the hospital in the back of a police unit. Which saved ten to fifteen minutes of response time, which potentially saved this person's life. A lot of bleeding, very quick thinking by these two individuals and just try to put yourself in a situation like that. Where you have a victim that is shot. There's again, a lot of commotion, a lot of response. This is what these guys are trained to do. This is what they're trained to respond to. It's just unimaginable when I think about it. But they essentially, because their quick action training experience and so forth, saved this person's life. So special thanks to again, Officers Tyler Smithy and Sergeant Cliff Earl. Go in Officer Ben Bossi. I know this guy has a stack of these coins by now. I can never believe it when I get emails like this. This one is from Wyatt Martinez. Wyatt writes in and says he wants to commend Officer Bossi, number 185. I wonder how he remembered that number. For his professionalism. He says he's from a rural area and he is not used to such positive interaction with PD. Officer Bossi was incredibly personable, professional and informative when he was stopped for speeding. So a person is stopped for speeding and they have such a great experience that they actually take the time to write an email in. And this happens a lot. Right? It was completely his fault. The stop was justified, indicates. He hopes that officers like Bossi are maintained on the force in the Fredericksburg Police Department. And perhaps in this case even considered for a future leadership role. Given the current climate, he would be an excellent example of good police work. And would be an asset to the Fredericksburg community for years to come. While he did cut me a break, even if I hadn't, I would still commend him for his peacekeeping professionalism. Commitment to safety regardless of the situation. I want to recognize when policing works. Thank you for making the effort. I ride a motorcycle, huge supporter of traffic laws. Because of that, see hazards firsthand every time I ride and people disregarding those laws. So thank you again for your service in the city, Wyatt Martinez. And last but not least, I wanted to wish Garrett Vaughn and Leslie Embry in our office a happy birthday. So happy birthday Garrett. So, happy birthday, Garrett. All right, well, we can do better than that. We're gonna sing to Garrett. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Garrett, happy birthday to you. It's always my pleasure to embarrass a staff member. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and for all of those who are recognized. Item number five is council comments. Counsel?
Mayor, I have a few comments. On January 18th, I attended the annual planning and board meeting for the Airport Advisory Board. Just a couple of comments. Tea hangar occupancy is still 100% with 26 on the waiting list. Santa Fly-In, we had hundreds of kids show up for that, just had a, they had a great time. Toward the last quarter, the fuel sales slowed, but we still beat last year's record of 500. We ended the year with 537,000 gallons of fuel, so 1% more than last year, so it was still a good year. Then on January 20th, I attended the Economic Development Commission Annual Planning Meeting and Board Meeting. Town is still growing. We've noticed a little slowdown in the last month, month and a half, but there's still a lot of interest in Fredericksburg, a lot of good things happening here. So, the outlook is very positive. Then on January 24th, I attended the CVB meeting, subbing for Sharon, and had a great meeting there. The one thing that I'd like to point out, from November 21st to January 1st, the area from Elk to Mylum, Austin to San Antonio was geofenced, and they had approximately 304,000 unique cellphone geofenced within that area. So, and majority of those were on marked plots for the light festival. So, it was pretty exciting to hear about that. On January 25th, attended the last formal session of the SDR Task Force. I think the mayor is working on the final recommendations of the task force, so looking forward to hearing those. January 26th, Clinton had a town hall at Hill Country Heritage. Heritage Hill Country, thank you. I was trying to find the word for seat. About 50 people showed up, a lot of good discussion. In fact, the whole council was there. So, it was a good meeting, got a lot of good input from them, and always good to hear from the community. On February the 2nd, I had the honor of filling in for the mayor at the radio station, and we discussed the ice storm and the function of the Emergency Operations Center, and how important it is to take the survey for the comp plan. On January, I'm sorry, February 1st, I had the opportunity to go with Clinton and Emily to the Emergency Operations Center during the ice storm, just to see how the EOC works, how the coordination of the whole community. There's representatives from police, sheriff, all the school systems, all the fire departments, PECs doc, several other people, but it's just an amazing operation, and to see how everybody works together to take care of everything. And a big thank you to Justin Calhoun for his leadership. And finally, on February the 3rd, I had the opportunity to do a police ride-along with Officer James Wayman from 7:00 PM till 2:00 AM. Fortunately, or unfortunately, however you look at it, but it was a fairly slow night. But I did get to see a few traffic stops. We did make one arrest for DWI. So, I was able to go through the whole process and see how that worked. So, the force that we have, the police force that we have is amazing, as you can tell. But it was a great opportunity, and I appreciate Chief Warrell for helping with that. And that's all I have.
I want to thank Bobby for filling in for me for the CVB. But one thing he left out was the CVB is having an open house tomorrow morning at the Hill Country Center, where they're going to share their goals and plans for the year ahead. And Mary Clausen has, did you want to say a word about it, Mary? Okay. Is it okay?
Sure, go ahead.
They already have 100, over 100 RSVPs for it, so there's a great deal of interest in what the CVB is doing.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Counsel. We are holding our first, what we're referring to as a quarterly stakeholder meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at Hill Country University Center. And as Councilwoman Joseph mentioned, we have well over 100 RSVPs. So, we're very, very excited about our tourism partners getting together and wanting to learn more about where we're going and what we're doing, obviously, as a division in the marketing promotional arm for the destination. So, these will be quarterly moving forward, excuse me, but tomorrow is our kickoff, which we're excited to see the response, obviously, of our stakeholders that want to come and participate.
So that's tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM at the University Center HEB room or whatever.
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brayden. Thank you, Sharon. Ms. Kirchner?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate our IT Director Eric Whiting on being appointed to the Texas Municipal League Broadband Advisory Board, the statewide advisory board. And it's gonna be great for us and for the state to have him on it. Also, the Eclipse planning meetings are still going along. They are now moving to monthly. And Jennifer Crouppa and Justin Calhoun are doing a fabulous job of leading everyone through a lot of contingencies. We had an all-hazard emergency preparedness training all day yesterday, and that was, parts overwhelming, parts really reassuring. And we have a wonderful staff that is ready to hit us through some hard times that are inevitable. Lastly, Clinton and I are going next week to Austin, to the Texas Capitol, for the Hill Country Leadership Institute visit. And we'll be meeting with our state rep and state senator, so if you have any messages for them?
I want to second what Bobby and Sharon said, what Bobby and Emily had said about the workshop yesterday. I came away with two things. One was, yikes, we need to be sure that we focus on our preparedness, Counsel. That's what I mean, and making sure that the resources are all available. And the second thing that I came away with was how absolutely fortunate we are to have the quality of individuals in the fire, and police, and emergency management, and emergency preparedness categories. And as we were going through these exercises, and I was sitting at the table with Paul Honneman and David Young, I thought, we are in pretty good shape, and I'm very grateful for the work, and not only the personalities, but what they bring in their commitment to these tasks. And just want to publicly commend them all. Thank you.
All right, can I say one more thing? I was at the meeting as well, and one thing that, the training showed videos of previous emergency situations in cities and things. Well, the main video was a bridge collapse in Minneapolis, and that was in 2007, I think. That whole, the whole training process is being redone, and the video that's gonna be highlighted is Fredericksburg during the ice storm in 2021. So, not only have we gotten national recognition, but they go to Canada and do the same training and to the other properties of the US or however you say that. Anyway, so it was, it's an honor that we are part of the training process that's done by Texas A&amp;M. And so, I think we should be very excited that we did such a great job, and I think we're very prepared for what might come our way.
Thank you, Counsel. Item number six is a consent agenda. The first one is consider the approval of our regular meeting minutes on January 17, and the P&amp;Z joint meeting we had with Half Associates the same day, a few hours later.
I move that we approve the City Council January 17 regular meeting minutes and the City Council Planning and Zoning Commission joint meeting minutes. Second.
I have motion second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consider the approval of Resolution 2023-01-R, calling for a general election to be held on May 6th, 2023, for the election of two council members, establishing procedures for those elections and providing an effective date. Ms. Goodwin?
Yes, so this resolution is to call the general elections set for May 6th, 2023. On Friday, I emailed you an English and a Spanish version of the resolution. This resolution also provides the appointment of the early voting clerk, as well as the appointments of the judge, an alternate judge for the early voting ballot board, and for the election date, full location. I wanted to let you know the last couple of years, we have paid our judges $15 an hour, alternate judges $14.50 an hour, and all the other election workers $14 an hour. And of course, all they take the required training, so that we are all up to date. I wanted to also let you know that Fredericksburg has a really great election team. And so, we've got, we're really lucky to have some really great citizens. You help us out with the elections.
I move we approve the resolution.
Motion second to approve this item?
Item 7A.
Excuse me, 7A. I have one question. Would you mind giving a couple of sentences about how the judges are selected?
The judges are selected by the city council, mayor and city council. A few years ago, when I got here, we had a training, and I identified some certain people that would, you know, are willing to do it. Also, the recommendation at that time, Mayor Langerholtz. And so, we have just continued to use the same judges. And I have an alternate judge as a backup. There are several other election workers that could easily step into that position if we ever needed to.
So people step up, they go through training, they're approved by the council. Okay, thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
All right, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7A is approved. Thank you. Item A, consider the approval of a release of easement, electric easement and right-of-way easement use agreement to Hill Country Memorial Hospital property. Mr. Canazy?
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. About six weeks ago, we visited an executive session about a couple of easements on the hospital's property that were granted back in the 1950s. These property, or these easements, excuse me, are, there's buildings built across them. The city doesn't have any infrastructure within these easements. There's really no need for us to carry these easements and continue with them. The hospital is asked to abandon those easements, or release those easements, excuse me, which the city staff does recommend releasing those easements identified. This particular item, there's a couple of additional things that we didn't talk about previously with counsel. One of them being, there is some electric infrastructure on that property that does not have utility easements. So, we're proposing to get those utility easements, and the hospital has agreed to grant the necessary easements. Those are in your packet as well, consideration. And then, it was identified that there's a couple of locations where, one instance, a parking lot for the Perry Feller Building is built within the right-of-way slightly. A couple of small parking spots just extend into that right-of-way on Windcrest. And then, there's a setback, a building built in the setback off of Ruben Street, and a building built in an electric easement. So, there's really a couple of different moving parks, and I'll go through each one of those in a little more detail here. They are detailed in your packet. Attorneys have reviewed and looked at these documents from both parties, so we have had an extensive review. But the first part there, as I mentioned, as we discussed, is the release of those easements. That is on page 25 through 32 in your packet. So, just going through the first one there is a partial release of an easement, because that easement does go beyond the hospital's property. It's just a partial piece across the track that the hospital owns. That's on page 27, is the language, and then the actual meets and bounds descriptions or the notes are starting on page 29 through 32. And if it's okay with counsel and legal staff, we'll just maybe take this in parts. Is that okay? Since there are kind of three separate parts of this?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is page 33 through 48. Those are the electric easements that we're requesting. Those electric easements were not granted when that infrastructure was put in. I don't know why, but nevertheless, we're requesting those easements as part of this exchange, if you want to call it. Those starts on page 33. I'll just go through them one by one, if that's okay. The first one there is a property, I'm looking at page 35. The first one is on a corner of Burbank and Lano Street. I think that's the sleep app facility where they do some testing. Basically, it's from our primary line over to the meter that's located on the corner of the house or the building. So, it secures an easement for that infrastructure. The next one, page 39, is primary electric line for infrastructure across the front of the hospital property, basically along Highway, State Highway 16 South. Some of that stays in the right-of-way, some of it's on private property, but granting an easement along that portion to secure that, to secure that infrastructure. There's four separate easements here. The next one on page 44 is along Windcrest. That is a transformer and meter to serve the Perry Feller Building. So, it's just a little bitty outcrop there, again, to get an easement around that infrastructure. Please stop me if you have questions, if some of these are kind of hard to see on the drawings, for sure. And then, the last one on page 47 is off Mylum Street. Again, that's a transformer and meter, and just getting an easement around that. Any questions about the electric easements that we're requesting?
The question is, I've done the uplums of my life, that we usually left the easements in there because they're a necessity for the future, so why would we release them?
The city does not have any infrastructure within those existing easements, nor do we plan to put any infrastructure in those easements. Like I said, there's buildings that are built across a lot of those easements. I can't speak to why those buildings were granted or allowed to be built, but there are a number of buildings.
Well, it was a community hospital, and I think probably that's the main reason. But I am a little surprised that you built the Perry Feller Building over an easement without checking that out.
I don't think the Perry Feller, I don't think the Perry Feller Building's built across any easements.
Yeah, but you mentioned something about the building, parking lot.
Oh, the part of the parking lot, and I'll get to that. The part of the parking lot for the Perry Feller Building is built into the Windcrest right-of-way. So, let me direct you to that. I think we have a drawing that shows that. It might be kind of hard to read.
Chris, are you asking that we do approval on these one at a time? Or you just present them all to us and then?
Sure, I guess let me go through them all, and then we'll, yeah, if that's okay.
Thank you. No, yes, because you're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
To answer Mr. Klein's question, on page 57 of your packet? that the Windcrest right-of-way basically is, is running kind of through the middle of the page there. If you look really closely, about in the middle of that parking lot, there's a little bitty outcrop. It's two parking spaces that are built in the Windcrest right-of-way. By, I can't read off here, probably five feet. We don't have any plans. It's, you know, Windcrest is curbed. We don't have any plans of expanding Windcrest any further, any further development. So kind of moving ahead, it was advised to us the best way to handle these was to get some sort of right-of-way use agreement or easement agreement approved by council. Staff doesn't have the authority to approve those. So kind of moving into the third part of this, this request or this consideration is first the parking spots within that right-of-way to agree to those and as part of this right-of-way, it's called an easement, right-of-way joint use agreement, which was drawn up by our legal staff. And then on the Reuben Street property, there is a building built within a setback and a building built within an electric easement. And again, same sort of agreement. Our legal staff has advised that it'd be approved by council, not at the staff level. And they're very difficult to read or see on these drawings. I apologize. The setbacks and the electric easements, I could step up here if you'd like me to kind of show you where those are located.
That would be helpful.
What building is that?
I see the Brune building.
Okay.
Brune.
Doctor Loves.
Just fine.
It's what?
Doctor Loves office.
Eton and Love.
Okay.
What building is that? Okay, let me ask a question, Clint. Is the Brune building staying or is it going with the sale to Methodist? It is part of the transactions.
So those are kind of the three groupings. First, the release of the easement, getting or granting of the electric easements to the city. And then agreeing to this right-of-way and easement use agreement is kind of the three groupings of this request or this consideration.
Question.
Thank you, Chris. That was a great presentation. I think the whole, in the packet and everything, it's very easy to understand. And I think you can see by the way things were built, that the love of the community for the hospital. We just, you know, if the hospital needed something because it was a community hospital and there was so much support, we just built right over the easement without any thought about it. I think this easement is the last chance. Let me get my notes up here. This easement is the last chance for the community, meaning all the people of the community, through their elected officials to have any input regarding the sale of this community not-for-profit hospital to a large publicly traded corporation. Perhaps the sale of this hospital is the best or the least bad choice, but the whole thing has been handled poorly and there are people who are very upset. This hospital, the hospital, there was a hospital authority, the hospital authority board was not consulted, the medical staff was not consulted, and the entire community was left out of the plans, even though all of, everything that's there was give, it was built by money that was given by the people of the community through galas or memorials when people died or just for contributions to have a leaf on the wall for years and years. Many are reeling from this activity and the board is basically, we sold it, too bad, too late, too bad if you don't like it. This is, this is the position the board's taken by not telling anybody anything about it until it was all a done deal. I'm sure that every legal I was dotted and every T was crossed by the members of this self-appointed, self-perpetuating board. But now some hundred and fifty million dollars are added to the community to the sixty or so million that were already in the foundation. And these same people that, that did this without anybody knowing about it are asking to have control of this money. All the important boards are done, all the important boards are appointed by the county or the city. For example, the airport board is, there are people appointed by the county and the city and then they add some of their own people. The same thing for the health board, the historic review board, planning and zoning board, even the historical commission, which just approves the little plaques, historical plaques are appointed by the county commissioners. But this board continues to be self-perpetuating. And they're planning for some of the people that decided on the sale of the hospital to be added to the foundation board where they will control this, something like two hundred million dollars that are, that are all dollars that were raised by the people of the community and the people of the community have no say about it. So I would like to either vote against this easement or table this easement until things have been changed where the community has input to the board. I would like to see the foundation bylaws rewritten and the board be appointed half by the county and half by the city so that the people of the community who raised all this money for all of this great hospital, that they have some input in the way the money's handled going forward. For that reason, I would like to suggest that we table this easement or vote against it.
Thanks, Sharon. Sharon and I were both, did serve as chairman of the hospital trustees at one time. And so I would like to make the motion to table this item and until further research is done and further work, maybe from the, which I know the mayor is working with the county judge to get a meeting set up with the public.
So I have a motion, I haven't called for a motion, but I'll accept it. And I'm assuming you're second, second.
Yes. I would second.
Okay. So motion second, council to postpone this decision, table it until such time as, what would you recommend? Either one of you are both.
I realize that we are having a, or you're preparing to do a town hall meeting. I would suggest it after that town hall meeting.
I wouldn't vote for it until the bylaws of the foundation are changed so that the board is appointed by the city council and the commissioners court.
Okay. Am I correct in getting from your comments that you believe that this, this item is some sort of leverage opportunity?
It's the last, the last leverage that we have.
Okay. What I'm not clear about, and Clint, I'm happy to ask you to come up, but before you do, I have a citizen comment, Carol Hammerson. Carol, would you like to come up and speak for three minutes?
Thank you for the opportunity. First of all, when we got ready to come here, like many families before us and still now, everybody looks at the assets of the community and this hospital was one of the big things that made us and many other people decide to come here. My great concern is that this is a facility that affects more people than anything else. I may not have interactions with a great police officer and I hope I do, but some of us will go to this hospital. Babies are born here. We see our relatives die and leave us here. This has to be our hospital. Also, the people who have financed this over the years and fought to make it excellent have a legacy that needs to be preserved. Individuals, many, many, many medical people have said to me, I had no idea. And I will tell you, some of them are angry and I can see some of them leaving. So many professionals I've known who've been in situations in little communities where they have something like this happen, say, I'm not listening to this. And I don't know about you, but I've looked a lot in newspapers and articles and I have seen no good press about Methodist. Now, it doesn't say that it does not exist, but I cannot find it. I'm just concerned. We can't let this go. Anything that was done in secret to this extent always creates suspicion. It may be justified and it may not be. For many of my years, I've worked in classified situations. This isn't classified. This isn't national defense. This isn't some great secret of something that has to be protected from the people. This facility belongs to the people. It serves the people. And we need to serve it now by saying, stop this action, find out what's happened. Don't let a few people substitute their judgment, their beliefs for this whole community. You are our elected officials. They did not consult you. They didn't share this information. And so here we have one of those situations where they've chosen to substitute their judgment and their information and their intellectual process. They kept it for yours and for all the other people in this community who may have had experiences with things like this. And certainly a passion is, I'm exhibiting right now for doing the right thing for the most number of people and having it as transparent as possible. We need transparency in this for every citizen of this county currently here and all those who come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Clint, would you step up, please? And identify yourself with the audience. I have a couple of questions. You can comment, but I have a couple of questions.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Clint Codel and I've served at Hill Country Memorial Hospital for the last five-plus years. By accountability, I oversee many of our operational services, including those outside the walls of the hospital, our clinics, home health hospice. And then I have the privilege of getting to oversee our real estate service as well. And so I don't have prepared comments for today. Obviously, the, the item I'm here to represent is the easements, which are pretty straightforward, but I recognize there's a lot of strong feelings about this, probably more broadly than the easements and respect those opinions. And I think there probably are some forums in the works where those can be discussed, but I'm happy to answer.
My question is about the easements with regard to council member Joseph and Klein. They are recommending, excuse me, that we not act on this today until further opportunity to hear from the board and with regard to what they were facing and the decision they made. But with regard to the easements, is the easement issue a something that will hold up the conclusion of the sale?
Not necessarily. So just for context on the easements, the, the, the release that's being requested was a building expansion that happened in the late nineteen seventies. It just was never formally abandoned. And then the various electric utility line easements were actually for improvements that were done without the benefit of an easement. So they were identified as a part of the surveying process. And frankly, I think from the city's perspective and both from, and the hospital's perspective, it makes sense to clean the title up so that, you know, going forward into the future, the city obviously has a benefit of having the electric utilities that's in place. So it's not defined as something that holds things up, but we feel that it's necessary to, to get the record cleaned up so that everybody is protected legally with regard to those services.
You're saying that Methodist will purchase the hospital without a clean easement, without a clean title? That the city easement is still running through it?
I think we'd have to look at what those alternatives looks like. I think from our perspective, we don't see any reason that there wouldn't be a release of an easement that's been out of service for forty years or grant easements that have existing electric utilities on them that should have the protection of an easement. So I think that's something we'd have to discuss with them. We, frankly, it's been a pretty straightforward issue and haven't gotten to the point of discussing what we would do if these weren't put into place.
Any other questions for Mr. Codel?
Clint, I hit. I know you've been, maybe you drew this short straw to come here. I was informed yesterday by some doctors on the five oh one A that they've been offered contracts for less than they're getting now, up to thirty percent less. Is there any truth to that?
I can't confirm that. I haven't been directly involved in those, but that wouldn't be consistent with the information that's shared with me.
Thank you.
It's all just part of the lack of transparency, as Carol said, from, from day one.
Mayor, if I could, technically, we have a motion to table it before there's no debate.
All right. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
I didn't handle that well. Thank you, Mick. I have a motion and a second on the table to table this item until further, until further discussion. I will say that, that I am in contact with the chief officer and board of the hospital as well as the county judge. I would like to host a co-sponsored town hall and receive this morning their approval of that idea. So we're putting that on the schedule and it will be a community town hall where the chief officer and the board, at least some representatives of the board, will appear to answer community questions and also to, in my words, present the factors that caused them to make this decision and felt like this was the right decision. But anyway, the motion and second is on the table. Any further discussion? All right, I'd like a roll call vote on this, please. Ms. Kurtchner?
No.
Mr. Watson?
No.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. In, in view of the upcoming town hall, I think that's best for the community. Thank you. We move on. Somebody's having a good time out there. Have them come in and share it. All right. We're going to consider and discuss and take action regarding the twenty twenty-three hotel occupancy tax recipients process and deadlines. Shelley?
So today is the kickoff for the hot tax funding. So there's a PowerPoint. I think he's pulling it up. You each have a copy of the PowerPoint and then you each have a copy of the T M L two-step which I've provided you, which kind of goes into more explanation. Mr. Costin is here as well to help answer questions and so is Mr. McKenney. So, okay, next.
Which one, this?
The PowerPoint, with the city seal. And the city council will have approximately five hundred thousand dollars to available for twenty twenty-three. The normal timeframe for the dispersment is May the first, twenty twenty-three to April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. However, city staff is recommending a time, a change to align with the fiscal year, which would be May the first, twenty twenty-three to September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And I'll explain why later in the PowerPoint, why we would like to do that.
And I'll explain why later in the PowerPoint, why we would like to do that. So this is the timeline that I'm proposing for this year's hot funding. So April the 23rd, I'm proposing this year to have the first-ever orientation for any applicant who's interested in applying for hot funding. We can go over, review the guidelines with them, give them the applications, the deadlines, all of that information. March the 8th, I'll run an ad in the paper giving them the timeline, how to apply, where to send it, and when the deadline is. So the deadline would be March the 24th. March the 30th, the city attorney and the CBD this year were proposing that they redo the application. April the 7th, the City Council will receive the application, and it's that big fat binder that you get. And then on April the 18th, the City Council, at the regular meeting, will allocate the funds. On April the 20th, we will begin getting signatures on the contract for those who you have allocated funds for. So, next slide, Eric. Texas Municipal League states that the city simply needs to remind itself to always follow the two-step, and that's why they call it the two-step. The first part of that step is putting heads in bed. The second part of that step is the nine categories. So, next slide. So I have laid out the nine different categories for you. So, Eric, if you'll go to the next slide. So even if the event puts heads in beds, it cannot receive tax, hotel tax money unless it also fits one of the nine categories. So that's why it's the two-step. It has to meet that second one.
And number seven, Shelley, shall you say, only in certain cities are we one of those certain cities?
I'm going to let Mr. McKemey know, sir, we're, no, ma'am, we're not. I'm going to let Mr. McKemey.
Not is an okay answer with me, but go ahead, Nick.
Well, actually, there's more than one answer to that question. We are not a certain city as the population bracket goes. However, some cities have used that requirement broadly to require recreation facilities to qualify under seven and tie it in with other parks of the nine. So only in certain cities, we're not one of those certain cities, but we can have a certain situation, some eligible projects that are tied into recreation advancement of our current recreation.
Okay. So the answer's no.
No, we're not a certain city. Yes, that's described in the publication.
So is that, you said, existing sporting facility?
Recreational.
Recreational. It's not for new ones?
Well, it can be expansion of existing facilities, but in order to qualify for a sports type facility, it would have to be one that brings in tournaments or something.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me, Shelley. We did hear, or we did read from Texas Municipal League for this legislative season, they were considering, and let me do this correctly, did you see any of this, that there was a bill to consider expanding the use of hot for communities, municipalities to use for parks, trails, and enhancements, especially if they connected other facilities?
I think Representative Bissou filed that bill, and it would apply to all cities. It's still in the process.
Right. I know it's in process, but I'm just saying there's a possibility with this new legislative session. Go ahead.
Next slide, Eric. So, sorry, go back. You were right. So, proposed changes that I need direction on is, number one, aligning funding with the fiscal year. So the reasoning behind this is, according to the Finance Director, this would really help them out. And then also to let you know, many cities have turned this process over to their CBD. And Mr. Clausen is here. If you would like him, he can describe how they use the process in Grapevine, where he came from. But it's more of an efficiency process. Do you want me to go on, or do you want to hear from him?
Brady, are you prepared to address this? Okay, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Council, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. On January 24th, I had the opportunity to participate in a meeting with the City Manager and the City Secretary, in which was ultimately called to kind of familiarize myself, obviously, with the hot tax distribution process that is in place here in Fredericksburg. But then was also asked, obviously, how we did it from a municipality that I recently came from. There are a lot of differences, obviously, between the CBVs, between Grapevine, the City of Grapevine and the City of Fredericksburg, the first and foremost being, in Grapevine, the CBD was a division of city government. And so we were obviously, you know, attached to the city and not a 501(c)(6), which is how we exist here. Anyway, long story short, what would happen up there is what the council had chosen. Our funding model was a little bit different. In Grapevine, all 7% went to the CBD. But then, because our sole funding was hot tax, and again, we are bound by that Senate Bill 6, those nine uses, right, that are approved, our Board of Directors had oversight. And so on an annual basis, grants would come in through the CBD Board and be considered because, again, it was the Board and the CBD that were bound, again, by our sole funding model to abide by those Senate Bill 6 legislative, right, criteria. And so the Board then had the opportunity to review those, doesn't meet the mission, obviously, of what the CBD is responsible for, isn't hitting any of these categories, and then following up on after-action reports, again, to ensure that our processes, right, were kind of checking all the boxes. And so through this meeting, we were obviously just kind of brainstorming and looking at various opportunities, not to necessarily propose changes, but at the same time, just offer information, you know, that is a different way of doing it out there. So, again, the alignment of the fiscal year, we did it a little bit different because we obviously spent what we earned. We, you know, we didn't get prepayments on hot tax. And so it really made us look, and throughout the year, that we also had a process in which there was a timeline in which you would make those requests, as opposed to one call throughout the calendar year. You would have ongoing throughout the year, because, in all honesty, just for the sake of a bad example, my staff would tell you I'm king of those. But to have a call on, like, May of any given year to review something that's going to take place the following April, marketing needs and that type of finances aren't needed, obviously, in May, right? Those are needed 90, 120 days as that program is getting built out to address. And then the CBD, again, with our, through the Board in that municipality, we would have the opportunity to look at what were the marketing efforts to ensure duplication wasn't happening, because the CBD's mission is to market and promote, obviously, the stakeholders and the events that are taking place within, obviously, the geopolitical boundary. So it just, again, a little bit different process, but wanted to obviously offer that for context, just in dialogue, which we were able to have on January 24th.
Are these proposed changes from your conversation with City Manager and the...
There are a few of them, yeah, baked in. But again, it wasn't decided at January 24th that, again, all of it was going to be proposed, or even if there was political will for any of it, it was just merely a matter, kind of a brainstorming session between those of us that were around the table. And again, just if there was interest to take a look at that, or if, again, happy with the way the process flows, that is fine as well.
Do you have any heartburn about any of these?
Can we make it work? Absolutely. Do I know, I've seen a copy of the Giant Binder from prior years. A week is a pretty quick turnaround, but we will commit to being the best partners in getting that done, should, obviously, there be will from the council to make amendments to the current process. Yes, sir.
I know you will, Brady. I was just wondering if there's anything we ought to pursue a little deeper than today.
I'm more than happy to, again, have an offline meeting, you know, if we wanted to stay the course current, but...
Would you recommend such?
I don't think that's, I don't believe, in all honesty, that that's necessary. But if council would like to do that, then I would welcome that, so we could have deeper dialogue.
So are you in favor of these proposed changes, Brady?
I would, I'm open to the proposed changes, because, again, CBD's responsibility is primarily to offer, obviously, different opportunities and different perspectives. It's political will, obviously, that will prevail, right, on how we follow. So I'm not opposed to them by any means, because I'm familiar with another process from a different municipality. But I'm not against, obviously, the process in which it's worked for Fredericksburg in prior years. Ms. Codel?
And Mayor, Council, this is intended to be just kind of an open discussion about some ideas we have to make changes in the process. We don't have to change anything right now. This can just be a conversation, and as Shelley mentioned, get some direction from council. If there's some things here you like, that you would like to implement, give staff direction to do that. We can circle back next year and make these changes, as Brady mentioned, have a lot more dialogue. This is the starting point of the conversation. The January 24th conversation that we had, meeting with Brady and Shelley, was the starting point for us. So we just wanted to get this information in front of the council, start talking about this now. Again, this is intended to be a higher-level discussion item. We're not expecting any concrete decisions to be made today unless you're just all-in with all of these and tell us to go. So we're just looking for council direction.
Okay, any other comments or questions for...
I do. Brady, thank you for your input on this. I appreciate it. And this is your wheelhouse, so I would really like to see the CBD reviewing these applications. So when it, I am too concerned about the timeline. Is there, you know, so I was curious if there's a reason why we're trying to squeeze this in by April 20th? Because, I mean, is it just going to be you reviewing them? Are you going to reach your board? You know, what does that process look like?
That's a great question. Ideally, we would have time to obviously review it with our Board, because we had not discussed this with our Board as of yet. Again, it was a very high-level conversation on January 24th with how it was handled in another municipality. So, again, happy to take a look at this if there is interest, and obviously, in pursuing, you know, taking a look at some potential changes. But again, not standing here today, you know, proposing change on a process that has clearly worked in prior years.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Since the CBD gets 5/7ths of the tax, and we're operating on this 2/7ths, this might be more of a legal question, but there are certain requirements, like 15, only 15% can be used for historic, only 15% can be used for art. I mean, do you track that within your 5/7ths budget? Because then it would make sense that we're also looking at that for this 2/7ths.
Yeah, again, from a prior municipality, we absolutely track that, because you're absolutely right. Historic preservation and the performing arts, right, can, by law, can get up to 15% each, right, of hotel occupancy tax, and that is obviously decided by council, right, dictated by council. We would track that, but again, in the prior municipality, we got all 7%. And so that was left to the CBD Board to make those, you know, make and fulfill those grants, obviously, that came in on the annual basis, which was basically the fiscal year in Grapevine, is how they handled that.
I know this is only a lot of money, $500,000, but just making sure that those percentages line up with the total 7%. And then, lastly, on dispersing the funds, this is a projection over next year, right? This isn't money that we have collected. So my hope would be that maybe with enough warning to everyone, we could say, okay, next year, we're going to have a pause so that we can actually know a better percentage of what we could give out instead of forecasting this. The mirror with the county does, and it's a better...
So to that, that was one of the reasons why we thought putting it with the fiscal year would allow us that timeframe, the pause and... Was one of the reasons why the Finance Director, I'm sure, was willing to do that.
Shelley, did we have CBD review the applications last year?
No. I guess it's a new...
I didn't think so. Okay. So it's on the agenda as a conservative discuss and take action, but we don't have to do that, obviously. Are you all...
Do you want me to continue going through the different options, changes? So the orientation would be something that is new, and if everybody is good with that, we can do that. That would help us probably get everybody on the same page and know light applications coming in. And then, do we want to add anything on there about the advertising, marketing, to make sure we're not doubling?
Well, in HAST, in the post-event reports, we were always required to submit a example or even the advertising itself, especially if it's print, which is, you know, not so much common anymore.
So that is actually after the event happened, we could ask them in the application, where are you going to market?
Where are you going to?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. And then, are you okay with the CBD reviewing the applications this year?
Having been one that came for beg night for many years in a row for the Lusby County Historical Society, I would say that CBD would have a better purview over these grants. So I'm in favor of that.
That would also allow CBD to add these to their calendar of events as well. They would be aware of the activities or events. So, next slide. Do you want to add in a clause about proof of recipients, website being added, or the website of the CBD lodging being added to their website, to the applicant's website, or to their registration forms? We have it in the contract that they have to put it in there, but, or do we want proof? Because I know that some of the, those recipients currently do not have a website, so...
So that would require every applicant to have a website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
It can't be that many, right?
There's a few.
A few.
Do you want to retain any funding to sponsors of specific events, like you might have? One example that I can give you on that is, we did the TCMA, where we brought in city managers, city staff, mayors, council members a while back. We had an education session, and quite a few stayed overnight. You could have used some of that money for that. Another example is, I can tell you, the municipal parks are coming to Fredericksburg in 2024. There's about 300 of them coming. And so they are staying the night. There is a registration, and we could use some for promotion of that. That's your choice.
But we have that option every year, anyway, right? To designate the money.
Director, aren't you asking, do we want to take it out of hot funds, right?
Right. Do you want to hold any back? In the past, you've never held any back, and then you had to find in the budget where to pull it from.
How does it meet the hot funds requirement? I mean, it doesn't put heads in beds, or just...
It would have to meet the same nine categories, whatever you're, you know...
Right, and that's something that we could talk about during the budget process. These are the events that are coming to Fredericksburg. These are ones that are eligible for hot, and the council can here mark those funds every year for those specific events.
We're talking about pulling it out of hot funds, holding for the city.
Right.
If the city needs it for a bit.
Just holding some back out of that that we would normally distribute.
Yeah, this is mainly just so you think about it, maybe in the future, if you ever, you know, just an idea. The next one is, do you want to retain some for administrative fee, the process fee for maintaining the program? And when I talked to the previous city attorney about that, he said that that would, he thought that would be acceptable... city attorney about that, he said that that would he thought that would be acceptable. We could, you know, you know, if we could match how much it costs that person who's doing that to, you know.
About a city staff person within the city staff?
Right.
Okay.
Management of all of the funds. There's a lot that goes into this.
Okay.
The reporting back, the, you know, the the distribution. It takes quite a bit of time.
Assume that comes from the finance department?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Well, it comes from finance, city secretary's office. There are a number of different people there involved.
Okay. Do you want to make any changes to the funding schedule, the timeline that I gave you? Are you okay with that schedule?
Shelley, I'm curious, when do we get the reports back from how it was spent? Because that's going to impact my decision.
And I in your packet, you should have had a quarterly report. I think I gave you it was part of the contract. I don't know right off, but there's four quarterly reports. If you receive over sixty thousand and if you receive under sixty thousand, then you just do a one time final report. Would they call it a final report? But it's just a report.
And when you did one of those do?
And those are due back April the thirtieth.
And there are very few of those, aren't there? There are not many that we fund over sixty thousand, right?
Right. So the ones we fund over sixty thousand, they regularly do quarterly reports. There are actually some that we fund a lot less than that and they do quarterly reports just to show us what's going on.
Can we see those?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Again, just having that coincide with fiscal year, our normal quarterly reporting, financial quarterly reporting periods would be helpful, I think. And what we're talking about right now, starting the process one year and it goes into the next year or so over two fiscal years. So just trying to make that exactly coincide with that fiscal year makes things a lot simpler on the accounting side, the even the distribution reporting side.
But it doesn't cause problems running the CBB?
That would be a question for.
He says no. Thanks.
Okay. Do you want to make any changes to the hot application? That that was in your packet application list. So if you want to make any changes, I need to know. And do you want to make any changes to the required reporting? Normally, we ask them, a lot of entities will send us their receipts. In the past, they've always been asked to report everything and to maintain the receipts.
I would love to move up the reporting deadline from April thirtieth to prior to our decision on the next year.
Do you any additional information in your hot tax from the app? Do you want any additional information from the hot recipients, the applicants? So currently, your binders is what I'm talking about. Your binders will include the list of applicants, a spreadsheet with the last three years that the city and county has funded the requestor. And it will include the city attorney's review to ensure that qualifications are met and the CBB's review, and then a copy of each application. Is there anything else you would like?
It's very thorough.
I'm not prepared to answer that today. These recommendations were how was this generated? Was it is there are there problems that we're seeking to solve here? There's some chronic problems with the applications, with reporting, with the finance funding schedule, et cetera?
Right. We've talked about the the funding schedule being a little bit of a problem, not coinciding with fiscal year. That that would definitely be, you know, something we'd continue to recommend. I think there needs to be a higher level of accountability and reporting. We need to know where these dollars are going. When you make that request, as you're making those quarterly reports, we need to be able to check those boxes. Again, just to ensure that we have a level playing field that that two step is being met, one of those nine categories is being addressed and so forth. So really, again, we're not asking the council to make a final decision today. This is really a starting point for the conversation. I know that the council isn't intimately familiar with a lot of these things. So this is the starting point. We can provide a lot more information to you. We can talk one on one if you have any questions. Again, this is more of a, you know, high level workshop type discussion item. And we just wanted some feedback. If there are some of these that you want some more information on, we can provide more background. But yes, I'm trying to streamline the process, increase accountability, make it work better for finance and so forth. And there are a few other things.
I mean, I'm I would suggest that we might look at the the timing, the timeframe and maybe instead of the deadline to submit applications being March twenty fourth, move that to like April twenty fourth or something. So we're looking at applications and reports at the same time, if we could.
So you can assess the last year's recipients who may reapply. Yeah. And also consider consider other changes. All right. Mickey, I see your hand. If you'd like to step up here, I'll give you some time. Thank you, Brady. May I call you back? Identify yourself for the.
Mickey Poole. Didn't didn't plan on speaking about this subject, but I'm glad you're discussing it. I think this has been a terrible misuse of funds, pork barrel spending in previous councils. So I'm glad that you're reviewing it. The two step process is huge, but but the two pro step process very specifically says you have to meet step one before you can look at the other nine. And that is putting heads in beds. Okay, I I can give you multiple examples how this has been totally disregarded. Okay. And I would suggest that we have hotel years, short term rentals, people that are paying those taxes, they know what puts heads in beds as far. So I think that that would be a welcomed addition to Brady's group that looks at these as far as in it. But I can tell you we have a talking rock out on Main Street. And I promise you, it never put a head in my beds. Okay, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We went back in previous years, gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to St. Joseph's Hall. I think St. Joseph's Hall is great, but it never put heads in beds. It's a community activity center. Okay, we gave a hundred thousand dollars to the Nemets Museum. Nemets Museum is a nonprofit has open books. It showed they spent forty eight thousand in advertising. How come we gave them a hundred? I think it's very important that, you know, as as we grow in short term rentals, as we grow in hotels, that this money is earmarked for heads in beds and that you don't don't abuse it. It's it's been pork barrel spending at its best in Fredericksburg since twenty fourteen that I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Carol, I'll let you have some time.
One quick question. Carol Hamers, if there is a way to use some of the hot money to encourage families and with children and, you know, generational travel here, because one of the things we see are problems with certain groups of people who are a bit out of the norm. And so if we can find a way to do it creatively, I think it might be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, further comment?
Can I make one more statement?
Sure.
For anyone who's in the audience or that is watching, I have sent out an email to all past recipients, asking them to email me at sgoodwin@fbgtx.org with their organization name, contact name, contact email, and contact phone number so that I can let them know the process and the orientation that.
These are previous recipients?
Yes. Anyone who is, you know, would like to apply.
Okay.
I need that information.
Okay, counsel. Does anybody want to take action on this? All right.
Yeah.
No, we don't have to. Right, Mick? The agenda calls for us to take action, but we don't have to.
Well, I I think, Mayor, what they're asking for is to approve the schedule, the form and so forth. That would be the action you could take. If you wish to do it now, of course, you can look at changing those.
Okay. But we don't have to. I mean, there my feeling is there's a lot more discussion needs to be had about these proposals, proposed changes. I don't have any huge problem with any of them, but I think they need further discussion. And I'm I'm meeting with Brady soon. So and Oliver, you're welcome to do that. Yes, sir.
Mick, are you saying we need a motion to approve the orientation? Because I think one of the things Shelley said is we want to move ahead the orientation. And that's got to be good for Brady, too. But can't you need a motion to do that? Pull that one thing out of here?
No, I don't think so. I think staff can do that.
They can go ahead with the orientation.
But I think the important things that we addressed for today to improve the application form and.
Okay. So the application form is what you've been using?
Yes.
Okay.
We did, the previous city attorney and I did change it several years ago to clean it up. And this is just another process that we would like to see.
But you've got to get things out. So you need us to approve.
Yes.
Okay. The schedule and the particular form.
And I have a. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it clear, counsel?
Yes, I'm not ready to. I I don't want to approve the timeline as it is, but I will. I can move to approve the form and the hot orientation.
But if if we if we make changes to the process, wouldn't you need to know that in the orientation?
I would just need the deadline for submitting the application.
Emily, would you clarify clarify for me your comment just now? You're you're not you're not wanting to approve the entire timeline, but what?
I said the February twenty third hot orientation meeting. And on here, it's the deadline to submit applications is March twenty fourth. I would like that really. So it'll be closer to so our approval will be closer to a time when we can see the past reports. So I just make the thing up if I say.
So you just want to approve the the first two items of the timeline or or three or whatever?
Still second that motion.
Okay, pull those three things up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I'll take a motion on this on the timeline. How's that?
Did you just do that?
Oh, did I hear a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the first three items on her timeline, eighth, twenty third, and March eighth, as you see. Any further discussion? I'm in favor of her motion. Say aye.
Aye.
All both motion carries. Thank you. Now, with regard to the form, we need to approve it even if there's no change? Oh.
Do you want to add anything?
You've seen that your. No. So we don't need any action. Correct. Thank you. Mick, it's so good to have you there.
I'm glad to be here.
And Mayor, counsel, if I could, this is something that we'll continue to talk about throughout the year. Again, just the starting point for the discussion, making some changes. Some are some are needed. You'd need more information on why we're proposing some of these. So we'll continue to fill the council in and and make improvements to the process as we go along. Looking forward to next year, probably.
I haven't left any motions on the timeline. I am so sorry. Where are we? We are at eighth seat. Consider discuss and take action on the City Council twenty twenty three goals and priorities.
And again, this is as this is a special meeting. And we've talked about these special meetings, more of a work session type discussion here. You can imagine us at a having a round table discussion. That is really what this item is intended to be for. So no formal action taken on this particular item, just very high level discussion. It's hard to believe this early in the year, we're already talking about the FY twenty four.
Yeah.
Budget and priorities. But I as I've discussed with staff in the past, one of the things we'd like to start doing is having this type of conversation and about the January February timeframe, just talking about a very high level capital improvement, planned projects, talk about the different pots of of funding, just trying to get get a sense from the council what your priorities are going into the new year, going into the the new budget process. So I've provided a lot of background to the council, a lot of information that you've seen before. I've got a copy for you that I'll hand out. And I'm going to start with, if I could have Eric pull up the priorities that the council set at a special meeting work session back on June twentieth of twenty twenty two. So we went through a similar exercise back then, again, four out of five new council members at the time, just trying to get a sense for what your priorities, what your priorities were. I heard some of that during candidate forums, some of that reflected in in the priorities that that you came up with. I think I asked for between three and five, and that's almost exactly what I got. So you can see from the list, we have addressed some of these items in the budget process. And there are also a number of these items that you you all had in common. One of the common priorities was traffic infrastructure. We'll talk about that just a little bit more. It's on another one of my lists, the midterm, the midterm transportation projects that we've talked about, the extension of Mulberry Street, South Cherry, extension of Friendship Lane, those types of projects. Parks improvements, we've talked a lot about parks improvements last year. We actually in the end removed a couple of projects from the list, specifically new tennis courts, new pickle wall courts were eliminated from the budget. We're also continuing to talk about sports parks and so forth. Broadband made up a lot of grant ground on the the broadband item last year, beginning to build out that that specific project. And you can see there are a couple of other items to employee salaries and benefits. There are a lot of EP items, fire EMS. We addressed a lot of those issues.
Anna, when do we know we will get the results of the survey that the comprehensive plan process generally?
The survey is still open, and I got word this morning that we've received nine hundred and ninety six.
All right.
Responses and one Spanish response. So just need three more to get us to that thousand that you're looking for.
Any of you out there have not filled out the survey, do so today so we can meet a thousand. That's just a thing. The the consultant said that it's common to have one percent response. And if we have a thousand, that's pretty close to ten percent. And we then we can they can go everywhere and say Fredericksburg killed it. We want that.
So it'll be up at least another week because we just sent it out on Friday through the schools district. And I think we saw a bump after that.
So once they get the results, they turn around pretty quick of giving you.
Well, that yeah, that'll be the next phase of the project is analyzing all of that. Where are the commonalities? And so then the second part of their project is to report back to us what they heard from us. And so then we'll have another workshop and.
Well, it'd be like I imagine that they will say, here are the results of the survey, and we all get a document or whatever. Because that that impacts my decision about what our priorities, what my priorities. Counsel, any comments about this? Do you want to you want to set ourselves on some sort of schedule for coming together with budget priorities prior to, let's see, last year we did it in June. Are you recommending we do it sooner?
No. Can I can I work through the rest of the presentation here? It might be.
Yeah, just I want you to read the list.
Sure. Not reading the list, but I was going to mention that very good point, as we're setting priorities, as the city council is setting community priorities, the comprehensive planning process allows the public to let you know what those priorities are. Mayor and I had this discussion about waiting until we get the survey results to really nail this down. Again, this is all just very, very high level. This is all just very, very high level. Trying to give guidance to staff, give us a sense of what your priorities are going into the year. Again, giving me direction during my evaluation coming up next meeting, what high-level items you would like for me to concentrate on throughout this year into '24 and so forth. I'm not going to read from this long list of items. This particular list has been in existence, has grown over the past five years or so. Some of these are just my items. For instance, I shared with Mayor that I would like to do an annual state of the city address at some point. Maybe do development wards, maybe have a Main Street designation, just some of my ideas. But again, you see items like sports park. We've talked about market plots, events, event fees. We've had discussions with Brady again about how Grapevine handled special events. A lot more discussion to come on that. Water conservation, you'll hear, you'll hear next meeting, an extensive update on water conservation, what that means for Fredericksburg, the Hill Country region, the state of Texas, short and long term. Again, is that a priority that council wants us to concentrate on? We have a number of facilities that we talked about, including a new city hall, new police station, municipal court, fire station. I've already talked about the transportation projects. Again, I'm just trying to provide a primer to the council, a reminder of some of these very high, high-level things that we've talked about in the past. We did have a list, an extensive list of projects from our former city manager, Kent Myers. I think there were 26 or 28 items on that list. The list that I provided you showed the ones that we have already checked off that list, the ones that are still outstanding. We have the Hotel Conference Center. Parking was an issue. We're working on a parking garage. Of course, we still have on the list to hire a new city attorney. We had an item to revisit and make revisions to city personnel policy, policies. You see the fire station show up there, capital improvement fund, the street projects that we talked about. Again, CBP lease, that's coming up on the next item. We've completed most of these, but there are still some of those very common items that are still hanging out there. And then finally, I provided you with a list, a wish list from Ken Cook. I asked Ken if he minded if I referenced this today in the council meeting. He said, go ahead. I thought it was very thoughtful, well put together. It doesn't just speak to city of Fredericksburg needs, but, but also county and so forth. It includes childcare, talks about the current legislative session, his hopes for that session and so forth. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that, see what, what his thoughts were. Some of them are related to our national resources. As we've talked in the past, the county does have, has in the past, had a difficult time controlling development in the county, especially with respect to traffic, water supply, septic systems and so forth, density of development. They're addressing that through some of their regulations, and that's something we have in common with him. He talks about Main Street. He talks about the need to continue focus on our uniqueness and history. That's something that was front and center during our first meetings regarding the comprehensive plan. That's a theme that you'll hear repeated as we go through that process. So again, this is intended to be, all of this information is intended to be a primer and kind of reminder to the council of the priorities that were set last year, of some of the items that continue to be on this list. And then also give the public an idea of what, what types of items we're, we're thinking about, some of the things that the council is talking about. I talk about all this during our town hall meetings. You were all present at the Hair to Chill Country meeting. I did go over a number of items on that long list. Emily has prioritized the list, kind of categorized, compartmentalized some of that. So we continue to refine that and so forth. But I'm just interested at this point, if the council has any discussion regarding priorities, again, any direction for staff at this point, items that you would like us to bring back for further discussion. This is how a lot of those items are added to the future agenda list for the workshop type settings, which this is intended to be that type of item up here. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if you all want to discuss them yourselves.
I just wanted to, and you talk about the traffic situation. I think we really need to get, and I realize when we get with the county, we need to count ourselves, but we need to work on a little truck route or something around town, and we need to. We talked about it, we really need to start moving on that. It's going to take a while, I realize.
And some of the smaller projects, midterm projects that, that we analyzed as part of the kind of secondary relief route effort probably do as much to relieve traffic around town as the relief route itself. So the extension of Friendship Lane to Tappydale, Kerr, all the way across 290 West to 87 North, you know, that in itself would be a pretty good reliever of traffic, for instance. Frederick Road, we talked about Frederick Road, eventually tying all the way back over to Friendship Lane at East Main Street of the wastewater treatment. Those types of projects, you know, allow people to get around Fredericksburg without getting on Main Street and choking up the. So again, that's the sort of thing, if you want a little bit more information on those projects, we can provide a very high level of detail at your request.
Mr. Stoudt, you signed up to speak on this item.
I didn't know what the item was going to be about, but now I do. In, in the past, we tend to think of priorities in terms of budget and good things to do, the, what, what the city wants to do the people of the city want to do in, in the survey that's coming up, right? But it's not just about what we want to do or what we can afford to do. And I would encourage you to think about metrics to use when you kind of rank these goals and priorities. You've got a long list. Have you agreed on what's important in your ranking? You can each have different opinions. But if you, for instance, if you put risk of getting in trouble deciding to do this way, that relative risk of doing it or not doing it. And I was talking about emergency management. I'm talking about the risk of failure, the risk of being, underestimating the cost or the risk of changing the environment that we want to keep. Another might be the character of the community. If we, if we do this project, we spend the money, how's it going to change the environment or the character of the people that either live here or work here or visit here? It might, that might be an idea to think about. Is this going to be helping in our, in our ability to manage a city? There's a difference between city workers and what you manage here and managing the character of the, of the city and the infrastructure, the people. So you can say, well, this is good for our, our city staff and how we manage things as a city versus how this changes the city and the county at whole. Maybe I'm not sure of that. But I mean, if you, if you look at what's good for helping Shelley, you know, and Anna do their, their business, that's one, one thing you can, but, but the ability for businesses to, to conduct and, and bring in the kind of people that you'd like is a different thing. So the bottom line, I'm saying, come up with a set of criteria that you'd like to use as a, as a team to assess the goals and priorities outside of just can you afford it?
Thank you.
I have a question. We have a list of 37 discussion topics, and they're not in any priority order. You're saying that Emily took them by category and, and, but did we? I don't, I don't think.
She generally categorized them, didn't include everything that I had on the list in, in her final list. But again, this is just a, almost a random thoughts list. It includes everything from projects to, you know, just ideas. For instance, a city TV channel, we talked about that a little bit during the.
Did we, did you distribute the list?
I did, I can send it again. I don't have it with me right this second.
That's okay, just before our next discussion.
Because that was part of our discussion about having, you know, maybe every, you know, first of the, first meeting in April, we talk about roads, whatever.
Yeah, great idea. This makes me nervous because some of the things, because it looks like you have a number one, looks like it's more important than maybe.
Right, no.
Number 15, you know, number one's a sports park and number 15's a fire station. It is one, makes it look like one's more important than the other. I just wanted to clarify that it's not.
Right.
It's just a random thought.
And I'm trying to make it very apparent that we have not, not prioritized this list. It's the council's opportunity to take a look at this long list of items and compartmentalize and prioritize those yourself. George makes a number of good points. And from a public works perspective, some of these projects that were, I talked about water supply being one of them, landfill transfer station, you know, both of those are related to risk, you know, water conservation, running out of that resource is risky. Having a leaking landfill is a risky proposition, expanding the footprint of that. Something we're going to talk a lot more about throughout the year and into the budget season this year. Those types of items right there, again, we just want you to see those on a list. As we bring those back up, we'll be providing a lot more detail. First look at this point.
All right. Moving on. Item nine, short-term, our city managers report A and B short-term rental permitting and code enforcement update in the winter storm update. Okay, and I might get. Sorry, let me get back to my agenda here. Yeah, the first part of this, I'm going to have Anna and Garrett handle.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry for the delay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, the regular email updates staff has been providing y'all regarding SDRs have been helpful. This morning, I'd just like to provide some additional updates and really answer any specific questions you have. So as I go through these, if there's anything specifically you want to talk about, feel free to chime in if you happen to answer those. So despite the ice storm that Clinton will talk about, that, that posed some issues, we were able to issue an additional 42 renewals along with one STR accessory permit. That's a new one. In addition, I noted it in my emails, but we flagged 103 STR non-conforming units that showed more than 90 days of inactivity. So what we're doing is we're reaching out to those owners and operators, asking them to provide documentation showing some form of activity. If they're unable to do that, we're issuing, issuing a denial notice. And those are the ones we will watch to make sure they're no longer operating and take appropriate action if they are.
You know, how many of those are R2s or R1s?
I, I don't have that handy, but we will put that together, and I'll include that in the next email update, so. On the enforcement side of things, IT and code enforcement have been working closely together to update CodeCop, which is our internal software that code enforcement utilizes to handle cases. That now incorporates the new administrative adjudication process that Joe Mersky is handling. There are currently 19 case hearings scheduled through that process for February with an additional docket date scheduled for the end of the month, so that will probably include five or six additional cases. Between January 30th and February 6th, code enforcement issued 34 violations. Approximately 60% of those related to STRs. The vast majority was related to trash violations. And, and generally, what we're seeing lately is around 50% STR-related issues.
Garrett, are those trash violations because they're overflowing? Like, do you, what are?
It, it's a mix, so there's a lot of overflowing trash cans and trash cans being placed out well in advance of their pickup day. Some of these operators are placing the cans out, you know, on a Monday when their trash doesn't get picked up till Friday, which is a violation.
And are y'all looking at if, what is it, four, four occupants need a 96 gallon? Is, or whatever it is, are you checking that as well? Or are those part of the violation?
So that's part of the inspection process for renewals, things like that. For some of these consistent violators, we are looking into that to make sure they are providing adequate receptacles. As far as other coordination efforts, staff is continuing to coordinate with a number of members of the STR task force, including Mike Hogan. I know Eric sat down with him recently and had some lengthy discussions on the workflows that staff utilizes to permit and process these applications. I, I do know he's making progress on his customized solution, but that is taking some time. While that's been going on, we talk about these parallel paths. We've also been working with IT and Christian Collins, who's developed a number of other software packages for the city on a potential customized solution. I think Eric's pretty confident they can do that. That would just take time. But here recently, I did want to note some, some meetings we've had with MyGovernment Online. We've referred to them in the past as MyPermitNow. That is a software package that Development Services will be utilizing for all of our development permit processes. So through these discussions and implementation of that process, we found out they offer a potential solution to handle STR permitting. Just on Monday, we had a very good lengthy discussion with them, and we believe that is the most viable solution out there right now, especially as it relates to schedule. They went so far as to agree, and this is MyGovernment Online, they've agreed to develop a testing environment that the city could utilize to test a number of cases. We've heard this before from other providers. But they, they've said they can develop that in the next two to four weeks to allow the city to begin testing. There's no obligation on the city's end and no cost. So we could test it, see if it works for us. I, I think the biggest thing to note on with them, and Eric could chime in here if needed, but there's nothing that the cities ask for that they're really saying would, they'd have to do extensive customization. It's just changing a couple of things within their system. They already capture a lot of the data, they can deal with renewals. So there would be an implementation process, but we feel very confident that they could provide a viable solution.
City of Kerrville using?
Yeah, I was going to touch on that. So the city of Kerrville is using them to permit STRs. They don't go so, so far as to process hot remittance through that system. So that's something we would have to add to it. But by all accounts, Kerrville is very pleased with that process. Anna found a video that the city of Kerrville has that kind of shows the process, works through it. It looks like what we, what we need. So we're going to continue that discussion. Yes, sir.
I was likely to say Kerrville has maybe 10% of the STRs.
Yes, it's, it's numbers, you know. Again, the biggest issue we have is making sure the 1,300 records we have are ongoing active permits, that all of that ends up in a usable system for the city. That's part of the issue we've been dealing with with Granite Kids, so.
I assume you can't find anybody that's got any kind of numbers to compare with, so you have to find somebody that's using it, but they're not going to have the numbers we have.
I mean, there, there are other larger cities that have higher numbers. I mean, there, there are other larger cities that have higher numbers than we do.
You, well, I say using that problem.
There are some, um.
They mentioned Pigeon Fort and Sevierville in Tennessee, which are very large, um, tourist communities. And so we just haven't had a chance to reach out to them yet because we were just notified yesterday or Monday. But they would definitely have similar numbers.
And you've got IT group, Eric, them working with you on this.
Yes, so we have developed, we, we've talked about the whiteboard exercise. So we basically completed that flow chart, the, the workflow for how staff receives and reviews these applications and renewals. So we're, we're very confident, we've got a process in place that, that we can now share with these different people that are working on the solution. And, and again, I, I think we're definitely making process, progress. We're still in that bridging the gap between Granicus and another solution potentially, um, but things are working now.
Appreciate that, Garrett, did you have some comments, Chief?
My best. The chief provide an update on the, um, code enforcement violations coming through PD, noise violations.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Here to report on the PD's activity on the noise ordinance calls that we've received from, uh, January fifth, excuse me, January ninth through February fifth. Uh, the PD handled over fourteen-hundred calls total. Fourteen of those calls related to noise, from January ninth to February fifth. Seven of those fourteen were related to STRs. One of the seven was deemed or considered not to be a noise violation. And we are currently in the process, if we have filed a complaint through municipal court or filed a complaint through municipal court on three of these six that were determined to be noise violations on STRs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
They filed on the people making the problem or the owner?
The, the, the three that are currently going through the municipal court process are the owner.
The owner.
Yes, sir.
What was the timeframe again?
January ninth to February fifth. Fourteen total noise calls for the city, seven related to STRs.
You talked about all your complaints, they were all over the place.
I can run through real quickly on, on the majority of the noise calls. An STR at a party inside the residence, which triggered a call. We had a noise complaint at a hotel. An STR that was determined to have no noise violation. An STR with amplified sound, which we filed through municipal court. Marking dog, questions about noise ordinances. Talking loudly at an STR that triggered a complaint. And we had, uh, people in hot tub at an STR. We had a complaint about wind chimes that was not at an STR. Loud music at Lincoln Street. STR playing music, which were in the process of filing through municipal court. Talking loudly in STR, loud music from a vehicle, loud music from apartment complex or apartment, so.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Don Wagner, you signed up to speak on this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, as well as all the team members that are part of your departments, communication, I think, is paramount in this, and this is all about STRs and especially code enforcement. I've had several conversations with Clinton of, over, Jesus, over the past year or more about STR things. And I just wanted, mine's a happy note. I just want to say like Ray Orbegon and his team, um, Garrett Bond, um, the communication between me and them. When I've called them, uh, when I call the departments and reach out either by email or by phone, I always get a response. And I really think it's really important that, uh, however it works within the system, that you all support these guys that are working in the field and how it trickles down. When a permit is issued, especially in, in my issues are always STRs, uh, if it's a building permit or anything that's going on, they need to receive some kind of notification that a permit's been filed. Six or seven years ago, when I built a fence and I got my permit from the city, whoever handed it to me, he said, please post this sign in your window or in your front yard. I never see a permit sign in any front yards any longer. So we don't know as a community, when somebody's doing something, that they're doing it and they live here and they're asking, going to ask for forgiveness after they've already done something wrong. And I have a particular target one, I mean, I've got one right now that's going on where concrete was poured, a swimming pool was put in place. Everything about it is a violation. And how code enforcement is going to get support from another department, if it's the building department, whoever, that they did the permit or not did a permit, I don't know how that trickles down, how it ends up in the court, or they've got, the people have to, that own the STR have to start over. So if image is everything to me, communication is number one. Communication bubbles down all the way into image for our community. And if we forecast a communication and an image in our community, that people are coming in here buying residences or assuming residences that are STRs or anything else for that meaning, they realize that Fredericksburg is the place to be because we take care of our community. And that goes for parking semi-tractors and trailers that move around. The police chief and I share that common tractor trailer and moves around our community, unlicensed vehicles on the street that need to go on, and a lot of other things, but STRs, communication, please support your guys that are working in the fields because they're doing one heck of a good job. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions about that particular update? Okay, winter storm update, I'd like for Glenn and Justin to talk just a little bit about the event and, and recovery. Of course, when we noticed this item, we didn't know at that point whether we were going to have a repeat of, uh, twenty-one event or whether we were going to be successful in getting through this, but I just wanted to, uh, have these guys give just a brief update. For those of you that, that, uh, did have the opportunity to visit the EOC, uh, thank you for doing so. So for those of you that have not probably seen that operation, uh, when we have this type of event again, uh, I'll circle back with y'all. It's a, it's a remarkable coordination effort. As you saw during the training yesterday, a lot of different entities coordinating, uh, to make these, uh, events, the outcomes successful. Justin.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll just do a quick overview of kind of what we did through the week, and then if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So through the weekend before the storm, it kind of progressed quickly. Saturday, they weren't predicting very much. Sunday, they were saying we're going to have a little more, and we woke up, uh, Monday morning into some winter storm warnings. So we put together a staff meeting that morning, uh, had some action items for people to take care of, and we met again that afternoon. It was more of a community meeting, the school districts, Texas Dot, CTEC, um, county officials. We decided to go ahead and open up the EOC. We started it with a skeleton crew that first night with, uh, dispatch personnel and then three, uh, city staff members. That moved into Tuesday, there wasn't a whole lot going on. The roads were icy, but most people were staying at home. There were a few power outages in the county, uh, no real issues. Wednesday morning, we woke up to a little more of a mess. There was a wreck out on eighty-seven North, a tractor trailer jackknife there at Hilltop. That caused some other, some other, uh, accidents to take place. We could not get a local wrecker service to go out there and clear that roadway, and we also could not get the state level of Texas Dot to close eighty-seven North. So we worked with local resources, the street department deployed some signs, and eventually, late that afternoon, the Texas Military Division came and cleared that roadway for us. They brought five Humvees and a, and a large wrecker, and we requested that through the state. So it took some time to get here, but they, they did eventually get here and get that roadway cleared. Wednesday, CTEC called and said they were expecting to have more outages Wednesday night to Thursday. That did take place, uh, at about midnight on that Wednesday night. There were about twelve-hundred outages. That escalated all the way up to thirty-six-hundred outages, uh, by Thursday evening. Chris, Garrett and I had a conference call with CTEC that Thursday night. They kind of told us what their plan was and they worked through it. Not all of it was on their side. There were some LCRE transmission lines that went down, which they have no control over. But by Saturday, they had most of those people back online. Uh, we worked with some local people, there were a few, um, transient traffic personnel that got kind of stuck here. We put those people up in the super eight, I think we put up fourteen people total with five rooms. I'd just like to say thanks to the, uh, Public Works Department, some of those guys did things they're not normally doing. They were picking up, uh, stranded, stranded motorists, taking fuel to them, uh, putting out signs for Texas Dot. And then we also had Lee who was sending out updates to the community as we, as we worked through this event. I'll take any questions that y'all have about what we did during the event.
Good report.
Yeah, good job.
All right, thank you.
Item ten A, review or future agenda. Okay, so coming up on the twenty-first, uh, regular city council meeting, we have, of course, a group of minutes from, showing January seventeenth. Charlie's January seventeenth for this particular meeting. I might need to correct that. We have a CUP at Block Ten Mueller, Anna, that item, and the next four planning items, the one oh six East Nimitz and the Highway Street, Highway and Mylum. Want to provide any, any detail on those?
Those are all going to P and Z this evening. Item number twenty-twenty-three dash fifty may be pulled. We expect action on the rest.
Okay, we have the Convention and Visitor Bureau lease agreement. We're going to be ready to go, uh, on that particular item. And then we have actually a couple of executive session items, my evaluation, and then a discussion of the municipal board operations that needs to be added to that. Council, we're in the final phases of preparing the STR Task Force report. And I'll, that, uh, I'm going to, um, look to that twenty-first, the next meeting as the presentation of that report. We'll add that to the list. Thank you. Anything else to add, any other questions?
Does it go to page two? Are those going to be on the?
I'm sorry, yes, sorry about that. Uh, we have a, a police department officer rifle-resistant body armor grant, Derek will be presenting. We have a purchase of new Christmas decorations Andrea's been working on, and Anna Nutrie and Reed's Market Lots. New fees and policies for sports facility usage. This is an item that Andrea presented about a month ago, I think. Oh, pulling that one? Okay, we're pulling that one. And then we have another, a body-morn camera program grant on consent, again, Derek. And then a group of police department estimate for Far West specialty vehicles. We're outfitting an installation equipment and seven new patrol vehicles, again, uh, vehicles that were added in, um, the FY twenty-three budget. Thank you, then.
And on future agenda items, the soccer fields update, it says proposed February or March, or really March, March.
Yes.
And any updates on a joint county, city visit?
Been in discussions with, uh, Judge Jones, and we do not have a proposed date at this point. He's been talking to commissioners. Wanted to note that we may have a few commissioners at our, um, meeting, um, next time. Chris, were we still on for the water update item? I didn't see that on here.
Yes, sir, I was going to mention that. I've confirmed with Paul Tyber, uh, for February twenty-first, if acceptable to council. We'll plan to give the water supply, uh, long-term weather forecast presentation during that time.
It's going to be a full meeting. Anything else, Council? All right. Then we are at eleven, executive session.
I move that we go from regular session to executive session.
Second.
Motion second to go in executive session. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
The executive factor regular session, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second move we adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned, thank you everyone.